Good evening. It is 7:00. We're still missing one of our permanent, or our board members, Lynn Conway. We'll give her a couple more minutes. In the meantime, I've been recently having us a brief moment of silence for the citizens of Ukraine. So if you bear with me, I think they deserve our thoughts. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, we'll start the meeting, and I suppose I could go ahead and seat what we'll talk about. Marjorie will be sitting in, Salinger will be sitting in for Fred Deitman, who's out tonight. We have Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Ryan Deasy, and Andy Meek, who is our alternate, who will be sitting in for the Affordable Housing Draft vote. And that vote, only because he was sitting in that evening. Got all that? So we'll go ahead and start the meeting without Lynn. And so you're on, Susan.
Okay, so, um, so let's begin. We have the administrative review for Garden Homes. Davis, permission of the application.
Excuse me. So usually we do the minutes first, just because we follow the agenda? Right. And is there a motion?
Twenty-two.
Right. Thank you. Both, both dates.
All.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor? Okay, so now we can move on to administrative review. Thank you.
All right, so. For tonight, the administrative review for Garden Homes, last name Davis, zoning permit application for a change of use from office to personal services, the zoning permit application to convert approximately 3,366 square foot of office building to personal services, part of a large mixed-use property, includes commercial buildings and the Fair Acres Mobile Home Community. This includes references to a small deck and gazebo. However, these structures are not permissible without a variance. So the application does conform to bulk and use requirements of the GC-60 and includes fencing around the building, landscaping, and removal of smaller vegetation along Michelle Lane. So, apologize, I'm standing in for Keith tonight, so if I do things a little differently, you'll understand. So Keith's recommended stipulation was that the approval did not include any of the decks, gazebo, gazebos, or building additions.
Any thoughts from the commission? Thank you, Ryan.
Sir.
Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor?
Okay. The next item of business is consideration of adoption of the Sturington Affordable Housing Plan. The final draft plan was made available online and, and also distributed to each of you in its final form, much shorter than the previous. Have you all had a chance to review that? Do you need me to go through any of the details of that? I'm not sure what you've...
It's quite succinct in its present form.
It is.
Yes. So now that we're onto the housing plan, we'll seat Lynn Conway and Andy Meek will be in. Other comments for the new version?
Mr. Ryan, I think Keith did a great job. I think we did.
Let's catch the typos, please.
Mr. Chairman, I raised a point of order when we began the debate on the plan and markup of the plan. And, well, I think we were through it, created something that can be submitted.
Oh, thank you. I apologize. I don't think anybody had any problem hearing me, though, did you? My voice, my wife always tells me in restaurants, "Be careful, be careful." So anyway, I raised a point of order that, that I thought that either as a subcommittee or a committee of the whole, that, that we could consider this in a more orderly fashion. And, and I don't think the markup reflects our best work. I'm gonna vote in support of it, because the town has to stay in good standing with regard to this. But I, I don't think this document reflects our best work, nor do I think it reflects where we could have been tonight had we had a different process. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Chuck. You have some typos, Lynn, you'd like to correct?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if anybody else does.
Aye.
Okay. On page two, the first paragraph, I don't believe that we agreed to say "and implementation." I think we said the following are the specific policies, programs, and strategies to guide analysis to provide more qualified affordable housing in the town. Because in this...
I'm sorry, you're on the second bullet?
Yeah.
It's on page two.
Yeah.
It's the first paragraph, where it says, "The following are the specific..."
Oh, wait, yep.
I don't think... I'm not sure "and implementation" belongs in that sentence. We, we structured this so that we would give guidance on conceptions, on, on analysis, on things like that. But the actual implementation to provide more qualified affordable housing is probably not accurate.
I think the implementation can be applied. I'd leave it in there. We've cut out so much from this program, from this proposal, it's ridiculous. One more word?
Well, it's a big word, and it has large meaning.
Yep.
And the only thing that we agreed to implement is the creation of an Affordable Housing Committee to study a possible affordable housing tax-abatement policy. So, I'm not sure.
This document will guide the implementation, and that's what the sentence says. That's very, I tend to agree that I think it's, you know, the guide in front of that.
It doesn't say this will be implemented. It says this will guide the implementation.
Analysis and implementation.
Well, I think it guides the analysis.
Which would also help guide analysis and then therefore implementation. But I don't think it locks us into...
Any implementation whatsoever, for sure.
I would think, reading this as a sentence, I would be sure to say that all we're saying is it guides analysis and implementation. It does not force us to do something.
Okay. If that's how people read it, that's fine. And then, I don't know if everybody's read this, but did we, did anybody else have any comments on this?
On the commission?
No. Yeah.
I just had, I was letting you go, and I have some things, yes.
The second bullet on page four, under Tax Increment Financing Districts. Did we, did we say that we're going to create the Affordable Housing Commission, which will study creation of a housing trust fund, as well, or the possible creation?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe we want to say, which will study the possible creation of a housing trust fund. See, the first bullet says "possible," but the second bullet does not. So I just wanna, once again, we don't know whether, you know... It's just to add the word "possible."
I'd leave it alone.
It just makes it clear to add the word "possible," as you have it in the first bullet. So it's consistent. It's all this.
Anyone else?
Adding one word.
I mean, to be consistent, I see reaching from property tax abatement, that bullet above, where we say, "Study a possible affordable housing tax abatement policy." I think it makes sense to insert it in there, just for clarity's sake. It's a minor insertion.
Or pull it from the first one. Pull "possible" from the first one.
"Possible," and then "because," again, that just, I think it just makes more sense.
There's a big movement afoot to get Affordable Housing Trust Fund going, so I think that's part of the committee.
We use the word "possible" in all the other bullets. Why would we make this any different? We're not, in this document, as you've, as you said, we're not trying to put one thing forward above another thing. We're just saying, here are the things we're gonna look, look at.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
The recommendation would be to insert the word "possible" after, on the last, page four, last bullet, Housing Trust Fund. Create an Affordable Housing Commission, which will study "the" possible.
Yeah.
Just to be grammatically correct. Those two words, creation of a housing trust fund.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Those are my comments.
Ryan?
You know, with that, and the other, I'm good with what we did here. I don't have any other recommendations.
Chuck?
I'm sorry.
You have any?
No, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing I noticed was on page, I guess it is for, under the TIF, it says the Affordable Housing Commission, and again, the Commission for the Housing Trust Fund, Somewhere else it says "committee." So it's a minor, it ought to be all, all the same wordage, "Commission," "committee."
Yeah, I see up at the top, Property Tax Abatement Committee.
Yeah, that's where I was.
Change that word to "Commission."
Yeah, thank you. I lost track of where it was.
And would it be all the same body? That's, I was just wondering, you know, do you think it would be a Commission to do one thing and a Commission to the other? Or is it just purely a type?
I would say we start with the Commission, and allow the Commission to decide.
They're gonna do all three. Okay.
So is this Planning and Zoning Commission happy with this document? You don't want to include anything else from that report that was made, that the town paid money for? Any other statistics? Any other...
I would just note, Mr. Chairman, that, that, you know, this is, this is an initial plan, and, and the state enabling legislation says that, that every five years, the town has to adopt a new plan.
Understood.
And, and we may want to consider doing something in, in advance of that, as the work of the Affordable Housing Commission advances.
So I would like to, if we're going to vote on approving this, should we have a separate vote on, or I think maybe as a inclusive vote, creating this Affordable Housing Commission? Recommending the Commission be formed?
As I understood it, correct me if I'm wrong, this is something that the select people would...
They would like to hear our endorsement.
Okay, so would our vote be that we recommend?
Correct.
Not to, you know, say we create, but we recommend that the select council...
I agree.
Right. Do we want to have any specifications or number on, on this commission, or just let the select woman?
No, I think, I think it should be a diverse committee, you know, with representation from this board. But, but, you know, in the objections that we heard, there were financial concerns, there were social concerns, there were affordable housing concerns. Five prior chairmen of Planning and Zoning Commission stood up and spoke to us in opposition. There's a member of the Finance Committee that spoke to us. So, so if, if this is to be embraced, and a policy is to be accepted by the town, the more broad the membership of that Affordable Housing Committee is, the better the work will be, and, and the more broadly it will be accepted.
I concur with that. I disagree with how we got here a little bit, though, Chuck, is that, to my mind, it was a 2008 draft, sitting on the table of all those four other previous commissioners, that got shelved, put in a drawer and stuck away. And in 2017, the state said we needed to do something, and nothing happened, until it became sitting in our lap. So here we are. I'm quite discouraged with this four pages, but I'm willing to see what happens on the vote. And I think we really need to recommend having a commission.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And one of the things that maybe we want to consider suggesting, based on the, the draft that we started with, is that we have a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission be part of every one of the committees that is gonna be drafting this and bringing it forward. Because what we heard was this really kind of sits with us. Yes, needs input from various groups within the, within the town government, but with also within the town itself. And, you know, I think it's one of those things, you have to have an active partner.
It's a freestanding commission.
Well, I think what we've said is, and what I heard, was that the select woman would appoint people to be members of the, the housing, you know, all the committees that will be drafting the various parts that will input the final, the plan as we move forward, changing of zoning, if that's one of the things we go forward with, tax abatement, if that's another thing we go forward with. And I wonder if perhaps a member of the Planning and Zoning should be on each one of those committees.
What I'm... ...have here.
Yeah, I, I, what I think we may, and I think to Lynn's point, I think where I think we can get it to the right place is in our recommendation to form the subcommittee to the select person's council. We can recommend that, as part of that subcommittee being formed, the appropriate, you know, membership be pulled from other currently existing town committees, including Planning and Zoning, Finance, Wetlands...
WPCA.
WPCA, and the rest of the general public, as deemed necessary by the select persons. They can make this as large or as small as they want, but we can make that recommendation. They can decide how they want to move forward, but at least we have our recommendation.
This won't be a subcommittee. This will be a full-standing commission with minutes and publications in the newspaper.
It should be, yeah.
Yeah.
I also think that first selectmen should publicize the committees that, and not just on the web.
I think there's only one committee. This is one commission.
Well...
And they will study all these different, various things that are in this draft, from the trust fund, to the tax abatements, to TIFs, all of this, zoning regs. That will be their charge. It's a big deal.
But they'll have subcommittees.
That's up to them. We don't dictate that.
Well, perhaps that's one of the recommendations we want to make.
Why not let them just have...
Yeah, I, I think if we, I think if we just recommend that here's who we would recommend be part of this committee, and allow them to form that committee, and then the committee itself can break off, and the subcommittees, as deemed necessary.
To task, yeah.
Yeah, whether, you know, finance, whatever. I don't want to, we start getting into the menu table, the new committee, then we're doing, we're kind of doing that. I think we ought to give them the opportunity to decide how they want to proceed.
So you think affordable housing should be a subcommittee of Planning and Zoning?
I think it should be its own standalone committee.
It is its own committee.
And that's the way I perceive it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. Okay.
And they can split her off and have a finance tax abatement committee within that commission.
But I think it should, I think our recommendation should say that it, it's composed of, you know, a diverse membership.
Which would include...
It isn't, you know, a, a commission that's just made up of EDC, or just made up of In the Wetlands, or just made up of finance folks.
It can't be just people from all the, all our commissions.
It should be, you know, equal parts from all stakeholders.
And citizens.
And the public.
And the public.
And the public, too. I agree.
Now you're talking 11 or 15. This is gonna be a huge commission, if we have every single board.
Yes, there should be citizen members. I agree.
Right. I don't think we necessarily need all the other stakeholders in the town committees, though.
I had a, I had a commission in Hartford that was in charge of wastewater and water supply, and it was 29 members. And it, you would think it would be impossible to obtain consensus, but we did. And there was, the meetings could get a little out of hand, but it was very broad-based, to put it mildly.
And again, these are just recommendations. I mean, the select woman does not have to...
Correct.
I think what you're hearing is that we're recommending a very broad-based committee that is going to draw upon the various departments within the town government, and the Finance Committee, et cetera, as well as the public. And how they divvy that up, whether it's 50-50 or 70-30, is up to them. But I would also like to think, and it's just not publicized on our, on the webpage, I would like to see a public announcement in the newspapers that this is happening, and if the public is...
There will be a town meeting to have this created.
Okay.
So it's gonna be quite in the public eye.
Okay, I just wanted to...
It's gonna, and then the selectmen will have a open house, or, you know, they'll have a window for people to apply. The applications will be vetted, people will be interviewed, and they will vote on it.
Okay.
But, no, but I think you raise, I think you raise a good point. The more publicity that this gets, the, the more public awareness there is of the process, the greater the acceptance is gonna be of the plan in the end.
Correct. And believe me, the selectmen want to go that route now.
You know, you don't, you don't ever want to give the opinion that, that, you know, I've got it right here, I'll answer any question, you know, you want to ask me, but I'm not gonna let you see this, you know? It's, it's gotta be an open book. And I, I do agree that, that the public relations shouldn't just be limited to a legal ad, you know, that says that we're gonna hold a public meeting, and this is the agenda, because people don't look at that. There should be, you know, a, a release and an article, just like there was on this plan in the newspaper, you know, last week.
I'm sure there will be.
Because that, that is going to bring the public to the meetings, it's going to bring citizens who want to participate in the process to the table, and they're gonna make it a
I would agree that I think it's critical that as many voices from the town commissions and the public be involved as possible, so that we end up with an implementable plan that actually gets us to the goal of 10% affordable housing.
Right.
Which is what counts here. And the more voices we have with expertise, as well as a connection to the community, the better chance we have of getting something that actually gets the job done out there. And to me, that's the whole point.
Well said. Well said.
I think someone in the audience made a point, and, and given the level of interest, I think we ought to hear what he said.
I already seated Andy. He was seated when we had the public hearing. Fred's not here, so Andy is sitting in for Fred. That was, we opened the meeting, and I stated that clearly then.
So with that, then, do we want to make a motion? How do you want to proceed? Two separate motions?
I think all this, should be one package.
One package with the, okay. So the proposal, or the motion I would make, is that we adopt the plan with the change that we, you know, agreed upon here, the one change, and then we're the, two changes, actually, excuse me. Adopt that plan with the recommendation to the select person's council that a, they create a committee, a subcommittee, or a standalone committee, sorry, that would be, include not only members of the town, other town committees, Finance, Planning and Zoning, and all the other relevant committees that would have input into this plan, but also members of the general public to take this program.
Representing different quorons of the town.
And do we want to add to that a communication?
Yeah, we can, we can request that also, as part of that, that the, that the select persons, you know, advertise the creation of this committee through all, broadly, through all media available.
Thank you, Ryan. For a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Let's go right down the table. Andy, how would you vote?
Can we just discuss that for a minute, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion, yeah?
I, I would just like the, the minutes of the meeting to capture the sense of, of our discussion on diversity. So if, if you could, from the recording of the meeting, just capture in the minutes, the sense of, of our discussion on diversity. Not that it, it, you know, is an exclusive list, but, but the, the nature of the discussion that we held here this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Andy, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the town.
Ryan?
I vote in favor.
Lynn?
In favor.
Chuck?
Aye.
I oppose. So moved. End of that one. All right, Sue, moving right along.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is PZ 2207, SPA and CAM EOC Incorporated, Mr. Nena. And this is for demolition of a 3,380 square foot building and construction of a new 4,080 square foot metal building for boat repair and storage, with some associated site improvements and construction of a concrete block wall.
Can we have quiet in the audience, please, while we respect this new speaker? Thank you. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tony Nena with On-Site Engineering, and I prepared the site plan and the application supporting materials and packet that's in front of you tonight. With me tonight is the applicant and owner of the pro boat, Mr. Richard Lott. So if there's questions later on about the business operations, Rich can help me answer those from, from you. I'm just gonna quickly go through the existing conditions plan. I'm, I'm sure everybody knows, is familiar with the property. It's located on Clark Street, just before, or just after Mechanic Street. Opposite the property is the Mill property to the south, and Mechanic Street runs along the Easterly border. The facility was operated by Emmett Oil Company, probably for the past 20 or 30 years. It's since, has closed, and they're selling the property. The, the property contains two buildings, the existing garage in the Easterly portion, and then a office building to the west. And then there's a series of containment areas, concrete containment areas, that were once used for storing oil tanks. Right now, those containments are just concrete enclosures. One of them, in the south end, is actually half dismantled. And then there's two curb cuts on, off of Clark Street. This, there's one down here at the southeast end, and then there's another one between the two buildings, which lines up almost with Pawtucket Avenue. The site is partially paved at this entryway, and then there's a parking area in this general area. And there's wetlands located to the, to the north. And then to further familiar you with the property, the Amtrak rail system is along the westerly property lane. One thing to note, the drainage, there's, there's an existing culvert that comes across the tracks that... the tracks that, that captures runoff from the subdivision and the wetland on the opposite side of the tracks. And it's an old, from what I understand, a stone culvert that enters our property and comes across, across it and discharges in the wetland area. So, and then right at that culvert, there's a stream that takes the runoff through the site and then across culvert under Mechanic Street and then ends up in the Pawtucket River. The site is currently serviced by Public Sewer Water. The proposal will, will continue that, will tie into the same utilities. And there's a sewer system that runs down Clark Street, and the West Side Water Department runs the public water.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So you don't know really where the culvert starts and stops, or do you know exactly where it's?
Well.
Exits?
We know where it starts and we know where it exits.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't know what the path, we think it, it goes across the.
But there is flow.
Yes, there was a dye test that the town did, they entered dye into this end and it was found at this end.
I wasn't sure you knew where it came out.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
But it seems, just to kind of continue, it's just water?
Yeah.
Come through, okay.
Yes. So the proposal calls for demolition of the existing office building, which is this building here. The existing garage will remain for storage, and then we're proposing a 4,080 square foot metal building in the north, kind of west corner of the property. To date, we have approvals from Architecture Review Board, the Wetland Commission, and we have initial review from the state DEP for the CAM. So one of the, because to, to receive large trucks that deliver boats into the facility, we've widened the curb cut or entryway and off of Clark Street. It was about 16 feet and now it's almost 28 feet wide.
Okay.
And that's really to accommodate a lot of the larger vehicles that will come in and for deliveries to the site. We're proposing a retaining wall along the Easterly edge.
Excuse me for one second.
Sure, yes.
So the truck would enter there and swing around?
And come in, yeah.
It's, it's, it looks a little tight between the two buildings. It wouldn't be backing in, they'd be swinging right in?
Um, I did a radius template on it, and it, it's, that's why we widened this end so the truck could come in and get between the two, to the two buildings. And then they'd exit out onto this.
Gotcha, thank you.
What type of a design vehicle did you use on the radius template?
Um, it was a truck and trailer.
WB 50?
I think it was that, yes.
Okay.
So the, the retaining wall will both serve to widen the parking area and allow us a better turning radius, and also we've got the wall that goes to the, that runs in an east to west direction to protect and stay out of the wetland area. The rest of the site in this area will all be paved for parking. We have required four spaces that we need per zoning regulations. We're providing nine spaces with a handicap spot. And the other improvement is we're rerouting that culvert that crosses our property so that we have better control over it and update it to current standards. So we're proposing to run a culvert along this part of the property and then discharge it behind the building.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a tiny bit.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry about that. And then we've got public water and public sewer we're tying the building into. And then site drainage, I've, I've implemented a couple of catch basins to collect the runoff before discharging it directly into the wetland. I've addressed the town engineer's concerns about the floatables, suspended solids and oils and water, oils from just dumping into the wetland. We're proposing deeper sumps in the catch basins to catch the sediment before it just dumps into the wetland. And then the last catch basin will be equipped with a hood so it will, will prevent any floatables from entering the wetland. The, the other reason why we're paving as much as we can, in the packet, there was an environmental study that there is some soil contamination in the existing building that's getting demoed. And that's part of the scope of the project is to not only demo the building, but to remove the soils that are contaminated and haul them off-site. So the pavement will act almost like a cap.
Do you have to monitor that when you dig it out, then do they come back and make sure you got it all?
So there will be an environmental scientist or environmental engineer on-site that will direct the contractor to where to stop removing soil and what soils to be taken out, yeah. There is a remediation plan, I believe, that's out there for that.
Did you discuss the, the plan you just described to us, the catch basin with the hood in it, with the town engineer, and did he have any reaction to that?
No, he actually thought that was a good idea.
He didn't say there was a need for, like, a separate oil-water separator in the discharge line or?
No, no.
Here's his comment, comment number 17, says drainage system design should incorporate BMP, best management practices, to reduce sediment, oils, floatables, in accordance with deep stormwater manual. I don't want to get into, you know, details, just to, just, you know, all the potential methods that you could, you know, use under best management practices, but, and I guess I'll leave it to him if a hood is acceptable or not, but.
For the layperson, what's the difference?
It, it would, I think it's really a marginal approach, you know, and the town, the town engineer needs to take a, a close look at that.
What does a hood mean? I don't know what.
A hood is just like a, it's a partially, it's like a hood, it just covers the inlet inside of the catch basin.
Oh, I see.
And it acts, it does act to, as an oil-water separator, but it's not as effective as a well-water separator inline in the discharge line, which would be much more effective, I think.
More expensive.
And reducing oils and floatables from the discharge line, and it's periodically, it's periodically clean.
Mm-hmm.
But the town, the town engineer understands all this, so I'll leave it up to him.
Sure. I mean, the hood does, the flo, the hood actually below the flow line or below the water lines, so the, the clean water is discharged through the hood and the floatables and oils float to the top and don't get siphoned out.
Thank you.
Are these strategies being put in place to manage the existing contamination on-site or the new uses that the property will receive after modifications?
So one of the things in, that the environmental engineer in that report that I had included in your packet recommended that we don't do infiltration, and that's one of the, a BMP is to promote stormwater infiltration to the, into the soils. So we don't want to introduce water into the soils.
Because there's.
Because there is a potential for it to impact groundwater. So these implementations are for the roof drainage, for the new pavement area that we have, and, and also the probably minimal sanding and salting, so these oversized catch basins would, in my opinion, would, would probably act as equivalent to an oil-water separator with the hood. One of the things that we're, we're talking back and forth with, with the town engineer is to put a, a liner in between the two catch basins and use that for storage, and, and then that would dissipate out into the, into the wetland after a large storm event. So we're not increasing any runoff into the wetland. So that's one of the things that we're, that we're talking about as well. Rebecca Nolan is a landscape architect, she prepared a landscape plan, that's sheet seven and eight of this packet. We're providing a buffer on the, on the east end between this residence, and then we're also have a buffer between house number 24 on Pawtucket Avenue. That's in the packet, we're proposing, I think, I believe, Arbevaidi or Cypress, Loudland Cypress along this, this boundary.
Is there any addition of lighting to the, to the site?
So right now, we, we're proposing minimal lighting to just light up, we're just putting it on the new building for, really for security purposes. They, they don't usually operate out in, out in the parking lot after hours. It's either, the work is either done in the building during normal operations, but the lighting is minimal and it'll be full cutoffs that we put up on the, on the building. There won't be any light poles.
I'm sorry, there will be no poles?
No light poles.
Thank you.
In fact, due to the, the magnitude of the lighting, that's one of the waivers that we're requesting would be the, from the actual lighting plan waiver.
So they're just lights that go down from like the eaves of the building?
Either the eaves or the wall, or wall mounted that direct it like where the entryways are, yeah.
Do you have a photometric plan?
I, I don't, I just included the cut sheets on the lighting that we're proposing.
Good. Would you guess that it's, it's level zero at the lot lot?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we've got, between the building and the property, almost 100 feet, and same thing in this direction. And then you've got the railroad.
Makes sense. It makes sense, thank you.
Is it a double row of Arbevaidi on the neighbor side?
I believe it's just a single row.
I think it's single.
There's also a security fence that will surround the area and will be locked at night for security purposes.
And did you agree on the retaining wall height? Was that a question, Ms. Keith?
So in this corner of the prop, or the parking lot, I revised the, the grades to show that it was under the five feet.
Okay.
And I meant to, meant to bring this up, I, I submitted a revised set of plans to Keith on Friday. I brought 11 by 17 that I'd be happy to send, hand out tonight. That pretty much addressed every comment from the planner and the town engineer. So I, I can, I can do that while, that concludes my presentation, you know, like I said, Rich is here, if we, if you have questions on operations and, or if there's a question on the site plan, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other questions? I have one on, perhaps, for the boat repair person. What kind of chemicals and where do you plan on storing them?
Most of the work that I do happens off-site, just, oh, I'm sorry. Most of the work that I do is going to happen off-site there, so there's, it's more of a staging in a home base. So, you know, there'll be some stuff that's kept in, you know, the trailers or chem cabinets, most of the stuff. There's some other properties I use where most of that stuff will be at those properties and not there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I should backtrack to say that Marge Salinger will be voting on this application this evening, and Andy Meek will not be voting. Any other questions? So you won't do major repair on the, in the new building, or?
No, I mean, as you know, you know, much of the bigger boats don't go over the road, they'd be at the boatyards. And then, like I said, there's some other properties that I use for more of the nuts and bolts of what I do. So this is more of a staging, home base, storage, kind of a, in addition to what I kind of do daily.
Okay. Thank you. Chuck, you have any other?
Nothing, sir, no.
Entertain a motion?
Do we have any comments?
Oh, excuse me. Good, thank you, Ryan.
There's just one thing I was going to add as all of you were talking. There is annual groundwater monitoring that was included as part of the wetland permit. I think that's an important point to point out, because I think that's where a lot of you were sort of getting at, as you were just making the discussion. As Mr., I'm sorry, I'm going to say your name wrong, Nuna or is it Nena?
Nena.
Nena. So the revisions, Keith was able to review those before he left, though, and he did update these to reflect that, that all of those planning comments had been incorporated. So, so you'll just need some small stipulations and a decision on both the CAM and the site.
Thank you, Sue.
Just one other point, Mr. Chairman. Have you seen the comments, the town engineer's comments, Mr. Nena?
Have I seen them? Yes.
Yes, okay, you agree with all of them?
All 24?
Well, the, the last one about the easement, I, I disagree with that one, but.
Okay, but the, all the, all the issues about the drainage analysis and.
Yes.
Best management practices and everything, you agree with them and you can comply with them?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck.
So would that, make a motion to, do we have two motions for the?
Two, two votes.
Okay, so for the first vote, make a motion to approve the site plan as presented with the recommended stipulations from staff.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that's the site plan. Now we need the CAM?
And make a motion to approve the CAM as submitted to include also the recommended stipulations from the staff.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, PZ 2210 SPA and GPP Karen Hansen, site plan and a groundwater permit application for dismantling and demolition of a 928 square foot structure, reconstruction as an office building. The replacement building will be in kind on the same foundation at 392 Liberty Street. The zone is the CS5, and they're seeking both site plan and groundwater protection approvals for demolition and then construction of a nearly identical building in the same footprint as a real estate office with associated parking.
Thank you, Sue.
Hi, I'm Karen Hansen. So I'm, as she said, proposing to dismantle an existing 928 square foot residential building and rebuilding an in-kind 928 square foot office building on .57 acres. It would be a one-level building and on the same foundation. And I know Keith had commented on the site plan we have, and we did try to address most of his issues. I think there are still just a few outstanding issues that we have to have an engineer address at this time.
What are your big stumbling blocks with the engineer?
Um, we just haven't gotten the engineer involved yet. It's been a surveyor that did the site plan, so there are a few things that he just wasn't able to address that Keith had come back with, with his comments.
Are you increasing the parking or what? I don't.
So, yes, we did increase the parking. There is an existing paved driveway, but we did put in five more parking spots, one of them being handicapped.
Okay.
So how many? So how many parking spots total are you proposing?
So, there would be five parking spots.
Total?
Yes.
And no lighting?
What's that?
No lighting in the parking?
Lighting, I believe he did put in lighting at the sign in the front of the building.
Doesn't show any light bulbs on the site plan, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, anyway.
It would be a real estate office, so the hours would be, you know, nine to six, basically.
I'm just not seeing, in the plan, I'm not seeing the sign.
The sign? That should be in the front of the building. Proposed six-by-three sign.
Is it just on the building?
On the building itself?
Not on the building, in the front of the building.
Is it on, how high is it, do you know?
I don't know if he said how high it was going to be, but I know it was 18 square feet, six-by-three.
Is it lit, or is it just a sign?
What's that?
Is it lit?
I believe, yes, it would be lit. I don't know if he put that on the site plan, but it, the sign should be lit, yes.
And you're comfortable with the eight Department of Planning comments?
Yes.
You can handle those?
Yes.
The town engineer's comments you've looked at also?
I haven't actually looked at them closely. They just came through like a day ago. Keith just sent them. And I did send them over to the surveyor, and he said they were issues that he would not be able to address, and I would have to have an engineer involved at this point.
Okay. Most, the most difficult part of it's going to be the stormwater drainage, but I don't think there's anything, you know, with the area that you have out there, there's anything that you can't comply with. You are going to have to get an engineer to assist you with it, though.
Okay.
And again, I don't, I don't think it's going to be anything that onerous, so, you know, I'm not, I don't want to.
Looks like there's room to handle it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other.
No, I just want to be sure, this, this application is just for the change of the building, not the use?
Site plan application is one vote and a decision concerning the groundwater protection permit.
Okay, but I, okay, the use of the building, okay.
So, do we have any staff recommendations on this?
So, there were some comments that came back from the planning department in terms of extra details that needed to be added. Like you said, there were recommendations from the town engineer in terms of, like, a drainage analysis, location of the existing septic, ENS controls, so some pretty basic things that they'll have to take care of. And then Keith had had some comments, including some general things about, you know, stop signs, parking areas, bicycle rack. So they're, they're pretty straightforward, pretty small things for that size of site versus how much is being covered. That drainage analysis should be pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, so with that, then, I think we have two motions. So the first motion would be to make a motion to approve the site plan as submitted, to include also any of the town recommendations.
Second.
Or stipulations, pardon me.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Second motion to, make a motion to approve the groundwater protection plan as submitted, to include any of the recommendations and stipulations from the town commission, or town, yeah.
Town engineer?
Town engineer, I'm sorry. Okay.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It looks like a big improvement.
Yes, it will be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is PZ 2214 SPA and CAM for the Latimer Point Condominium Association, a site plan and coastal area management review for a 10-foot-by-6-foot shed and expansion of a roof shower at 12 Center Drive. And Keith had referred to this in the RM 20 and had recommend tabling, so I don't know if they are coming and going to present, and then he's recommending that you table it, or if he's just recommending that you table it.
Typically, when he tables it, it doesn't, we don't hear it until the next meeting.
There wasn't any way for me to ask him.
So we'll table that one, then.
Okay. So then we'll go on to the public hearing?
Yeah, and usually we have Lynn read the call.
Pursuant to the general statutes, the State of Connecticut revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulation of the Town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Waukesha, Connecticut, on Tuesday, May 3, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. The first of which, PZ 2208 SD and GPP, Christie Properties LLC subdivision and groundwater permit application for an eighth lot subdivision of a 38.78 acre parcel, property located on North Stonington Road, CT Route 201, Stonington, Assessor's Map 115, block one, lot two, Zone GBR 130.
Thank you, Lynn. So how proceed is seated tonight? Let's see, we're back with Marge Salinger, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Philbrick, Lynn Conway, Ryan Deasy, with our alternate, Andy Meek. There should be a sign-up sheet at the front of the door for those who want to speak in public. Bless you. First, we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll have some public input, in favor, opposed, general comments, and rebuttal by the applicant if necessary, staff input, board discussion, including the alternates. And then we'll close the hearing, have our commission discussion, and hopefully a final vote this evening, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members. I do want to say that this is my first try at doing something like this, and the folks in the town hall have been excellent, guiding me through this process.
And your Michael?
What's that?
And your Michael?
Michael?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Michael Christie, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, probably didn't, I'm a little nervous, but, Michael Christie, I grew up on Lightning Road, I'm still in the same house. Started a landscape company early on, and I'm still doing it. I got a degree in UConn in agronomy and plant science. And I was driving down the road one day, and I saw the piece of land for sale, and I inquired, and I purchased it, so, with the intention of building a home for my family and also developing the property. What I decided to do is, I looked at Olivia Lane, and I did not want to do that, so I decided to propose something that would meet the criteria for the GBR 130, and make the lots according to size. And in doing so, we were able to get seven lots, plus the eighth lot, which would be open space, and it would be proposed to go to Avalonia. In the packet, there should be a paper, a letter from them stating that they accept the proposed open space. They would access it from their existing Hoffman Preserve that wraps around the back of Olivia Lane. So we decided to do that for the proposed subdivision, and access, again, will be granted from them. I know that there's concerns, and I was able to, to read through the agenda for tonight, and there are concerns about a stone wall pentei, and I just wanted to make it clear, and I have some stuff from my lawyer I could, I could send out to you guys. I have copies of it, a letter that my lawyer wrote. But, basically, I'm preserving 3,800 linear feet of stone walls, which I can show you on the plan. So, the two stone walls that might come up in question are pretty small and minimal compared to the 3,800 feet that I proposed to leave on, on this subdivision. So far, I've been to the Inland Wetlands, Conservation Commission, police, and fire, and they've all recommended to approve the subdivision as is. And also, too, the permits for the, any aprons or openings to the road will be handled by the Connecticut DOT, not the Town of Stonington, because it's a state road that goes on. But, I, sorry if my staples didn't have a pointer, so I got my plow stick. The Conservation Commission liked it, so I figured, I figured I'd try it again. Just, I don't know if you guys are all familiar with the site, but Al Harvey Road is right here, and this is the town line of North Stonington, in Stonington. And all these homes here are Olivia Lane. So, these would be the, hopefully this would be my house, but we'll see what happens. These are the proposed lots. This is a shared driveway that goes up to these two rear lots. And right now, we have it proposed to go to this lot and this lot, but I talked to the DOT, and they mentioned just, if that's an issue, I could just widen this apron, and they would have their own driveways to these two homes and not be shared on the main driveway. They just liked it when I kind of grouped all the openings here to one opening. So, and then this, this lot here would have its, its own driveway, which I have the plans here. So, I know there's been some question about, from the town engineer regarding best management practices for soil erosion control, and we put that on the plan for the conceptual plan. We put on the silt fence, where we, where the engineer and surveyor deemed it appropriate. And each lot is going to have to go through, come back to the town, for each person that builds here are going to have to propose what they do, and at that time, they'll decide where they're going to put the house, obviously within the building envelope, and all the soil erosion control measures will probably change, because we don't know if they're going to put a pool in, they're going to put a garage, we don't know. So, we did conceptuals for a four-bedroom house, and we put them on there to, to show that it's feasible to get houses in, on a property. And Leglight has given me the bussing on the sanitary issue, and also, they, well, we don't know, you know, until you drill, but Olivia Lane all has wells in their homes, that are all here, so. Now, I've tried to address everything that I could possibly think of. Again, with the help of the town, it's been really amazing to me, their support and helped me on this process. So, it was always my dream to take, you know, I've always been making everybody else's property nice for the last 30 years, so I was hoping to be able to do something a little different, and develop some land, and, and try to keep the, the, I'm trying to keep the property in its natural, much, much of it is its natural state that I can. Like I said, this, this is all stone wall, here, here, and here is all bordered by stone wall. If you add up, that's 3,800 square, linear feet of wall. So, I know there's been some discussion, and there's, you know, which I understand. I mean, nobody likes to see development, I get that. But, in here, I tried to do the least amount of impact that I could possibly do, and not take it and do another Olivia Lane. In my eyes, I don't like that. What is Olivia?
What's Olivia?
Right next door here. And they, they put a road in. They, they did a different kind of subdivision.
I didn't know the name of it.
Oh, sorry, yeah, it sits right here, and this house is aligned either side, so, I mean, those are fine. I just wasn't going for that. I wanted to do something a little different. I didn't think it was appropriate to do that right next door. So, I chose a different route and got the minimum lots that I could possibly get, so. I don't know if there's, any questions? Go ahead.
Just for clarification, because I did see the letter about the two stone walls, and you mentioned them.
Yeah.
Can you just point out where they are?
Sure, I can. Right here.
In the upper north.
C Lot 2F, in the upper right. And also, too, I can take this page and I can flip it. So, I can flip it, so it specifically shows that lot. Would you like me to do that? I can do that, too.
I think I have.
Okay.
I have, and I just needed to.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the lot next to the North Stonington town line. It's the last lot. And it goes right through the middle of the lot. And, yeah, so, and when I, when I purchased the lot from a member of the Brown family, Jennifer, she had asked that I grant an easement, you know, she wanted an easement at the other end of the property. So here, we granted 20-foot easement for ingress and egress for Witchwood Farms, and Jennifer stole, which is Jennifer Brown.
Well, that's what the shaded line is at the top?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, yeah. When Jennifer, Jennifer was given the property, she's a daughter of George Brown, so she was given a portion of the farm, farmland, and at, it wasn't listed, when it was listed, it didn't include that easement. They changed that before I closed, and I was so far into it and so excited that I just said, "Okay." So, I, I gave them 20 feet. I don't know why they need it, but they wouldn't answer that question for me. But, anyway, this 20-foot easement is for the ingress and egress of Witchwood Farms, and Jennifer stole, who's Jennifer Brown. And also, the, the pent, and there's also a stone wall, nobody's mentioned these other stone walls, but I'm just going to point them out to you. Besides this pent, this stone, these two stone walls here, there are, there's another stone wall here, I'm not sure if you can see it, but, and those might have to be moved as well.
For driveways?
No, no, not for driveways. Well, this one here is going to be, have to be broken up for the driveway, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. But, but it's, and this one might be able to be left by the, whoever buys it might be able to leave this one. They might, right now, I have the house shown pretty close to it, but, again, they, they can move the house anywhere within that building envelope, and I can't tell them, I can't tell them what to do, but. I know these particular lots, if all goes well here, we get through subdivision, these are all sold to a, one family, two sons, in-laws, and then the father, so. I would, I would have something to do with my business for these four, if everything goes well, but that's the plan for me to do all the excavation, because I have to do a lot of work out here for the state to get the sight line. I'm not sure if you guys have seen it, but the, the road kind of goes up. I'm not going to touch the stone wall, but I have to, I have to take away some of this material, which, which is in here.
You mean, the road's lower than the?
The road is, yeah, the road's lower than the, right about in the middle here of the property, the, sorry, the grade, the grade kind of jumps up, probably.
From the road?
Yeah, yeah, so I have to cut that back, but the- Yeah, yeah, so I have to cut that back, but the, but the, um, the stone wall's gonna remain, so.
How, how many curb cuts are there going, are you proposing?
Um, right now, right now, there's three, there's one here at the end, um, for this lot and this lot, and then there's one for Lot 2B, but I can, like I said, I have other, I have the other prints here, I can show you a lot easier, um, and then the, the last one's down here.
I think, yep.
Yeah.
Got them.
And those would all be new curb cuts?
Yes, yeah, and right now, we have the sightline profiles in the back, the last three pages, it should be the sightline profiles that were done, um.
Now, that, those three curb cuts would not include that twenty-foot easement to the north, correct?
This one here?
Yeah, that.
No.
That's up to them to figure out how to get in there?
Yeah, I mean, they, that, that's the way it was when I met with, uh, or not me, I met with a realtor, because Jennifer was out west, alls they wanted was an ingress, egress easement, and that's what we provided.
Okay.
Well, that's not all CS.
Yeah, I'm, and I, I'm still kind of confused, because they own the property here, so I still haven't figured out why they wanted that, to be totally truthful, uh, because they own this, and it goes all the way back, they have a huge parcel that's still under Witchwood Farms, so, I, they said something, uh, in a letter today from Ann, that she wanted to reach the back portion of her land, but they own the, they own the whole thing, I don't, I don't quite understand.
I didn't understand that either.
No, so, um, but again, I have a, uh, I have a letter that I can at least give to you from my attorney that just, um, because I, I went to question, um, Mr. Burns on that one paragraph, um, that he wrote in there about having it be an historical, you know, uh, right-of-way, and, uh, but he, he unfortunately has COVID, so I couldn't talk to him, I sent him an email, but I haven't heard back yet, but I, I forwarded that to my attorney, and she wrote a letter about, you know.
We have it.
You have the letter from my attorney?
From attorney Ellen Brown?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you have that, okay, okay.
It just came to, it came today?
Yeah, 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 'cause, and then the Ann Brown thing came, I think, at one o'clock today, so, yeah, and I've, I've owned it for almost a year, so I was kind of shocked to see the letter, but, um, yeah, I don't know, I guess the, her and her stepdaughter aren't talking, I, I don't know what happened, but, anyway, um, yeah, so, so that is, you know, that was one thing that I, um, I knew that we had to discuss, so, I mean, if you have any more questions, you got the letter from me, uh, my attorney, um, you know, I, I bought it under the assumption that I, that was nothing, and, you know, I, we still haven't seen any proof that it is, so, unless somebody here has some proof that that is something, other than all of us know my titles, everybody, um, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can to utilize that stone to fix any repairs, um, you know, and I'm a landscaper, so I know that the stone is valuable, and it'll be used in the best methods, so.
Thank you, Mike, do we have any questions?
Have you seen the letter that, uh, Ann Brown, general partner in Witchwood Farms, uh, sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, I have, of course, yeah.
Are you familiar with, uh, the four conditions that she's asking us to impose on you? It looks like you've complied with at least the first one, that the pentway be relocated to the north side of Lot 2F and 2E, you've done that, um, she's asking that the sur-
With the easement, he's done it.
It's an easement.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what, the proposed easement on the north side.
Yep.
Basically handles that.
So he's, he's proposed that.
Yeah, I handled that, yes.
But she's also asking that the surface be improved to a driveway standard?
Yes, uh, that's not gonna happen.
Okay, and then a permit from ConDop be acquired?
No.
Okay, and then a new entrance onto Connecticut Route 201, improved and installed, I guess she wants a curb cut.
Yeah, um, I bought the property from her, like I said, her stepdaughter, it was given to her, I bought it from her, um, at the time, she asked for an easement, which I, which I gave, which I gave, uh, unknowingly why, I don't know why, um, but, yes, I mean, uh, at that time, I guess in that letter, it states that, uh, Jennifer wasn't acting on the behalf of Witchwood.
I don't, I don't, I just wanna know if you've seen the letter, that's all.
Oh, yes, I have.
Okay, and you, you don't agree with, with the conditions, other than condition one, where you've granted, you are willing to grant them an easement?
Oh, yeah, I did, it's already in the deed.
He hasn't done it yet, he has, all he's done, he's shown it.
It's recorded, it's recorded in the deed.
You've shown it, you've shown it on a map, that doesn't mean that you're gonna give it to him.
So, it's in the deed, I mean, it's, it's a deed right-of-way, it's in the town hall, so I did that already, yes.
Ingress and egress, C note four, water section, okay, it doesn't say that it's an existing easement, but you'll give her the easement? Well, I, I, what he's trying to say is he's already given her the easement.
I've already given it to her, sir.
Yeah, is my understanding, and you're not going to grant any further.
I know, I, I did it at the closing, I mean, it's part of, I mean, you guys should have the, the deed.
So you signed a deed on that easement?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Do you think he's, she's asking for an additional?
She's asking for me to try to make this like a road for her.
No, I, I understand that, but I, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Because what I'm hearing is it's already a deeded easement, it's done deal, that's done, you gave it to her, it's over.
Yes, a year ago, roughly a year ago, yes.
This letter is not suggesting an additional.
Oh, no, it's, it, but it's, it.
Easement, is.
No.
No.
Okay.
No, but it's, it's, it's suggesting that, um.
They want improvements.
Yeah.
Right, improvement on the easement.
Which, the pentway doesn't even have now, but I've.
No.
I think I'm okay with it, I mean, I think, I think it's an issue that's a legal matter between you and under butter, um, I don't think we really have a position in it, you know, whatever, you gotta do, you gotta do, agreed.
Thank you.
Any questions, Amy?
Um, I understand the easement, as a farmer, you need more than one way in and out of a field, let her drive through the mud, though, I don't think that, that's between you and her.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that, this particular, I mean, I've been around for forty-seven, um, you know, the last time that they put any, anything through this thing, I can't even tell you when, you know, a long, long time ago.
Well, I can tell you that, that easements over historical roadways can be very sticky title matters, and, and I would talk to your attorney and be guided, you know, by what he tells you, it's a matter between two property owners?
Yeah, no, Ellen, Ellen, she has, she has definitely advised me, I looked into it before I bought the property, so.
Fine, um, and the intersectional site distance issue that you talked about for the driveways, is that the driveway between Lot 2F and, um, it's a bigger map here, between, uh, 2F and, what else, number 2C?
And the sightline issues, no, um, the sightline issue.
You said it's an intersectional site distance issue, you have a sight distance issue, right, a sightline issue from the state?
Ye- yes, I do.
When you actually gotta cut the.
It's not that, that's not that lot, though, is what I'm telling you, it's, it's further down, away from the property, uh, further down from North Stonington, it's between, like, 2C, 2B, and 2A.
Okay.
On, on one side of the road.
Okay.
On my property.
Right, that's the higher ground.
Yeah, 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 they, what, what happened is they, the road used to be.
Higher.
Well, the road used to be over, uh, here.
Oh.
Yeah, I can see, I can see what, what's causing.
Yeah.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Two.
Okay, just to point out, um, a few things that Keith outlined to me, that, um, that there is, uh, five-point-nine, um, acre open space set aside, um, going to Avalonia, the preliminaries said that they would add it to the adjacent Hoffman Preserve, this is the GBR 130 Green Belt Residential, and the lots do comply with the zoning district. Um, the waiver of the requirement for public sidewalks has been asked for, that would require a supermajority vote, four out of five, um, there aren't any public sidewalks, um, for miles in this area. Um, the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission did grant an approval, um, asking that staff be notified prior to construction to inspect erosion controls, very standard, um, and also to return with lots 2D and 2E in case, um, there was any development within the regulated area, because on those lots, there were a regulated area that, that there could be within the building envelope. Um, so, there was also a request, um, for a waiver from the applicant for the stormwater management report, um, and he had stated, um, with a letter from his professional engineer saying that an analysis is warranted, our town engineer, um, strongly recommended that a, that such a report would be provided, um, because he was concerned with the possibility of development channeling runoff towards the street or adjacent development. The site is within the groundwater protection district, and with a groundwater protection permit, um, has been submitted, and the site is not in a flood hazard area, there's no public water and sewer in this area, um, however, preliminary comments from Ledge Light said the soils would be suitable, so, you'd need a supermajority vote, um, for waivers for the stormwater management report, and for the sidewalk along the street frontage, if you were to go forward this evening. Um, there were, there was one comment, um, that was not addressed on the revised plans, uh, that was part of Keith's original review, uh, that talks about depicting the location removal and demolition of existing stone walls, um, and he was concerned, um, that it was not clear of which stone walls were being, um, were being taken down and which ones were remaining. So there are some stipulations, if you'd like to go forward, you would need to vote on supermajority for the, the waivers, uh, decision for groundwater, and the decision for the subdivision.
Thank you.
And I believe you received the, both the letter from Ellen Brown, from the applicant's attorney, and from the opposing counsel.
Both Browns. And are you, Michael, okay with the Ledge Light Health District's three comments? They had three.
Uh, yes, I am.
Stipulations.
Yes, I am.
Yes, Ryan.
I was gonna say, so, do we have any public input, like, yea or nay?
That's, I keep, I'm all scrambled up this evening, thank you, Ryan, for keeping me on the straight and narrow, um, thank you, Michael, I did jump ahead with the staff input before asking for a public comment, so now's the time for any public comment? Step forward, general comments, in favor, opposed?
Thank you.
Please do, just state your name and address.
Um, my name is Meg Manning, I'm a resident at Olivia Lane, um, the only questions I had were two, one, regarding the proposed, um, donation to Avalonia, will there be road access from that portion off of 201?
No, you're gonna, if you can, you have access from these.
Okay.
My understanding with Avalonia is they included some stipulations, that it'd be accessed from the.
From the existing area.
The bigger Hoffman Preserve.
Okay.
There'd be no road from 201 to that.
Okay, thank you, um, secondly, on the curb cuts that you've mentioned, will those be stop signs, or will they be driveway access?
Oh, to driveway.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Any other comments? Well, in full disclosure, I use, my wife and I use Ellen Brown as to rewrite our wills recently, that's the only extent of any contact with either Brown.
Um, I didn't know if I could say one more thing about the, uh, stormwater report, um, why, that we feel that it's, uh, unnecessary to do a pre-imposed and spend four or five thousand dollars on engineering, um, these are three-acre lots, so, um, in, the way that I tried to explain to the town engineer, um, is that the way that the, the driveways are designed, if he looks at the grades, the water's not gonna make it to the road, and I know he mentioned he was concerned about ice, and, you know, he was saying that he doesn't want Mrs. McCrell to, you know, be on him about ice, you know, I said, well, she won't, because it's a state road, I said, you're, you're off, you know, off the hook, um, but, yeah, if you look at the grades, I assume you did, I don't know, um, and my engineers stated that we don't need that, um, like I said, that, they're pitched, um, in, in a fashion that the water's not gonna make it to the road, and.
Well, my understanding also is, when each lot owner comes in.
Yes.
For their individual house.
Yeah, I mean.
They're gonna have to present.
Because it was hard for me to, you know, I can't tell some. Yeah, I, if it was a three-quarter acre lot, okay, you can only put the house in a certain spot, but.
I think we, I think we understand the purpose of stormwater management report and the analysis, and I think we agree that this is a very low-density, low-impact subdivision.
Okay.
My point is well-made, and, uh.
We have another chance.
Yeah, I think, I think it's an excellent plan, it's a low-density, low-impact, uh, very sustainable development.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
So now, I'm, I'm, okay. Stand by.
All right, I can go eat now, I couldn't eat before, so.
It's fine. We'll coach you through this.
Move we close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
That'd be wonderful.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the stormwater management, uh, waiver, and also the waiver of the sidewalks as requested by the applicant. Second.
Three seconds, okay. And, and he, we'll, we'll let Lynn have that one, I heard Lynn first.
Ladies first.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the subdivision as proposed, subject to the stipulations of all the staff, um, all stipulation as all the staff has included in the, uh, reports submitted to us this evening by Keith.
Does that include Ledge Light?
Uh, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second by Ryan, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Got it. Build her.
You got it.
Oh, do we have to do the groundwater protection plan?
Do that.
Oh, we did that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's covered, too, okay.
All good?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And we're, we are with drawing number thirty-eight.
That's correct. Um, I, I have to apologize, I just realized that I skipped over a piece of correspondence, and we didn't do, like, open correspondence, um, it's related to a hearing that's already been closed, so it can't really be put into the hearing anyway, which puts me in a, a strange position, because, um, the hearing was closed before tonight, and we received this.
Oh, well then.
So, I have it, if you'd like to see it, but truly, it can't be part of the record.
Correct.
Okay.
That's all I understand.
Just making sure that you don't have some other.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
You did very well tonight, Miss.
Thank you.
I'm the one, I'm the one who kept tripping up.
Good job. Last-minute subs.
Okay.
So, make a motion to close the hearings?
Second.
Your second, Aunt Mark?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.